Noting the hour of 7:01 in the quorum present, I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting of January 4th, 2022. Happy New Year, everybody. We have approval of minutes. We have it 7:15. Continuation of a hearing for Meadowbrook Commons. We have an A and R for 55 and 65 Farm Road. We have a complete streets update. We have a discussion of town meeting warrant articles. We have a discussion of draft compliance guidelines for multifamily districts under section 3A of the zoning act. We're going to have maybe a discussion of ongoing development projects and town plan a report. So I'd like to start by doing a few quick things and then because I don't want to start something before 7:15. So has anyone had an opportunity with the holidays to review the minutes of December 7? Yep. Everyone has? Okay. Are there any modifications to the minutes? Are you comfortable with the minutes, Robert?
Yes.
Do you know who else? What other members are on? I can't see who's on.
Everybody's on now. Addie May just joined.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the planning board minutes of December 7th, 2021 as written?
So moved.
And do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm going to do this by roll call. Chris is an aye. Is Addie May there?
She is muted.
Okay, so I'll take that as an aye. Will?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I'm going to jump right to complete streets. Gino, would you like to talk about the complete streets update?
Sure. The main update, as was presented at the select board meeting last week, is that we have been approved for our second complete streets project, which consists of building a sidewalk. Yes, on Sanger Street, along with crosswalks over to to connect to the pedestrian activated crosswalk across South Main Street and handicap ramps at the intersection of Saw and Sanger, South Main at all the corners. So that we're very happy about that. And there's still some paperwork to go through. Contract with the state and such, but that's moving forward and hopefully will be constructed this summer.
So I want to do a couple of really quick things. So I'm going to jump around a little bit. Under, you want to jump to talking about streetlights, Gino?
Sure. With another grant that we have received from green communities last week, under the supervision of DPW, all, well, it was not quite 133 or the original list was 133, but so almost 133 streetlights have been replaced with LED bulbs, which will significantly reduce the electricity costs for for the town.
Okay. The charging station.
Charging station has been in operation now for about three months. With this been about 27 unique users and over 100 charging sessions so far. It's been free to this point. However, at the select board meeting last week at the with the recommendation of the Energy and Sustainability Committee, there will be a charge shortly to use the station. And it was decided to at least initially start with a charge of 30 cents per kilowatt hour, which which basically just covers the town's cost for electricity. And that's because you might think, oh, well, you know, I see kilowatt hour cost of nine cents or 11 cents plus delivery cart. But there's also demand charges to distribution and transmission. And the average, when you when you pro rate the all the costs, it comes out to roughly 30 cents a kilowatt hour. So so the town will just barely cover its costs and that that should be set up shortly, hopefully by the end of the week. So if you if you have an electric vehicle and you'd like to get another free charge, hurry up and go to Town Hall and and you can do that. But otherwise, the charge will begin very shortly.
Well, I think I think it's wonderful. I'm waiting for the gas pump to be to be put in for me. Again, we have a few more minutes. So I've I asked Gino, just to give a background, where we have some new members about a discussion of 11 Farm Road. And so basically, I wanted Gino to quickly discuss the date, the decision that the planning board came up with, a little bit of background, and what is our projected outcome? If you could do that in a couple of minutes, that'd be great, Gino.
Sure. So the property at 11 Farm Road did some work in the right of way and in removing a stone wall such and without a scenic road permit, which is required, without permission to alter the sidewalk in the in this town right of way. So the planning board worked with the homeowners and they applied for a scenic road permit after the fact on March 10th of 2021. And there were a number of hearings. And on July 6, 2021, a decision was voted to essentially leave most of what was done intact with a couple of exceptions. The stone wall that was removed was required to be replaced, reconstructed, with the exception of a small area where they had now built a walkway out to the street. So it was agreed to let that remain. But the rest of the area across the frontage, the stone wall would be replaced. Also, the sidewalk that they rebuilt did not include a grass strip. And so it was voted to require that the grass strip be, there really wasn't much of a grass strip previously anyway. But it's desirable to have the grass strip. So so part of the decision was that the sidewalk would be rebuilt or the part of the site existing sidewalk would be removed to to enable a grass strip to be constructed there. And Sean Colleen is joining the meeting now. He may wish to comment further on that. But the bottom line is, this vote took place on July 6, but no activity has occurred since that time. So so I would just suggest that we do a follow up reminder at least to to the the parties involved that they need to complete that work.
Okay, if I may jump in, Gino, I'm not going to require a vote of the board for this. In all of our discussions, we basically spoke with their attorney. So I think it would be appropriate if if Gino sent a letter to the attorney just giving a very pleasant soft ass saying, basically, we haven't forgotten about you. We are also aware that they probably can't do much of the work this winter. I would have expected it to be done in the fall, but we were all busy and no one was really following it. So if it's okay with the board, if someone is opposed to it, let me know. If not, I'm going to ask you know, just to send a letter to the attorney and say, you know, you know, come up with a plan, get moving on this far as. So I would suggest starting by asking softly and nicely. And then if we have to do something else later on, we can always do that. Does that seem appropriate, Gino?
Definitely, yes.
Okay. We have five minutes. Is there something here you think you can hit in five minutes, Gino? Are there any reports with meetings with other boards?
I think Stephanie, on behalf of the groundwater or Tom Trainer, who's also here from the groundwater protection committee, may want to mention their upcoming presentation that's scheduled. I've forgotten the exact date, so I'll let them let them mention that.
Well, if Steph thinks she can do it in four to five minutes, that's great. If not, we can do it after 7:15. So I'm going to leave that up to Stephanie.
It's very fast. Tom has organized on behalf of the groundwater protection committee, a municipal private well ownership 101 webinar. We found that a lot of the families moving into Sherburne may not have owned their own wells in the past, may not even know if they haven't paid attention during the real estate process that they have a well. And so it's January 24th. There've been some notifications on the town website. Anyone is welcome to follow up with me individually, but it's a Zoom. It's a remote session. And it's sponsored by a nonprofit who focuses on private well outreach and education.
So is is there any way to piggyback with that? Something about septic systems and basically what not to flush?
That's not the focus of this particular, he has a set of materials that he uses to share. So but that's a good, that's a good thought for us to think about moving forward as well.
Okay. Chris, Chris, Tom Trainer, can I add 10 seconds?
Of course.
Thank you, Steph, very much. One thing, it's Thursday, the 25th of January. Yeah, 7:00, 7:00 to 9:00 PM. It's posted on the town website. There's a pre-registration requirement. So you got to go to the webpage or register to get the Zoom link. And there is, there is some slides. I've seen the slideset that address potential well contaminants, including septic, basic septic concerns.
That's wonderful. It's amazing that we haven't done something like that sooner, but thanks for taking it on.
Our pleasure.
Which is, it's correct on the website. It's a Tuesday.
Okay.
Tom, just to clarify, you said Thursday, the 25th.
I know, I know the 25 is correct.
It was, it was on a, I knew it was on a Tuesday, so we're, we're good. Tuesday, the 25th. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay. It is 7:15, so we have a hearing for Meadowbrook Commons, which the applicant has requested that we continue it again. So do I have a motion to continue the hearing for Meadowbrook Commons to February 1st at 7:15?
So moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Roll call vote. Addie May?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And Frank?
Aye.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Hopefully, it'll be February 1st. We'll see. I'm going to go right down the list now. I hate to start too many things if we have something at 7:15, but I'm going to go right down the list. So we have an A and R for 5565 Farm Road. If it's okay with the board, I'm going to start by speaking about for five minutes. And I'd actually like to take the major control or discussion of this topic. So here we go. Usually, in A and R takes some review, but the submittal is typically straightforward. And the board time spent on proper endorsement of an A and R is but a few minutes. This has not been the case with 5565 Farm Road. With A and R's, time is always an issue because the board needs to render a decision within 21 days. And this was presented to the town on December 27th. A few people had asked me, could we kick it out into another meeting? And the answer is no. So I would like to start this discussion by stating that from a planning position, I'm very much in favor of this project. The greater Boston area needs housing, and this project would be the first to apply our new open space subdivision bylaw, as well as the new inclusionary housing bylaw. But unfortunately, right now, that's sort of where my enthusiasm ends for this project. Independent of the A and R discussion, I do not agree with the measurement of lot width at the building line. I feel it's inaccurate and it plays seemingly to make some sort of a point. I don't know what point. But the those lines are all over the place, not even close to what I would, or I think with the board would determine is proper width. Sherburne's legal justification for its large lots is the need for wells, septic systems, and safe offsets between them, as well as to afford protection to abutting properties. So when we're presented with overly engineered lot lines, we put into jeopardy the health of future residents, as well as fairness to the abutters. With the first A and R, which this board endorsed, to me, the law was clear that A and Rs can be allowed with zoning violations. So even though I disagreed with those little four timed frontage lines, it would be easy with that first A and R to correct it due to the applicant's owning the abutting properties. And there was a shared driveway, so both properties could quite easily be brought into compliance. By allowing the non-compliant frontage on the remaining lots, we end up with an over-engineered lot lines and increased density that would be difficult, if not almost impossible, to correct once structures are in place. The A and R currently as it's presented, I view this as a subdivision because three of the homes have inadequate frontage and access on a new private way. No matter how this board votes on this matter, it is my anticipation that it may be decided in the courts. Because of this, I would prefer not, I would prefer to vote without the board deliberating. So no board members say anything that may weaken our position. Having said that, I'm still in favor of the project, just not as it's presented. And I look forward to working with the applicant on a revised plan. So the question to the board, and again, I don't want to deliberate. I just, we need a majority vote. And it's not the Chris Owen show, so I want you guys to really think about everything I've said. And I hope you've had an opportunity to look at the plan. So the question is, do the proposed lots shown on the plan meet the minimum frontage requirements of the town of Sherburne bylaws? Or is the plan before us an attempted evasion of the duty to comply with the regulations or an obvious attempt to circumvent the purpose and intent of the subdivision control law? So I'm going to present a motion. I believe in positive motions, not negative motions. So my positive motion would, I'm going to move to endorse the A and R for 5565 Farm Road. So a yes vote means that we think it's fine and we agree with the frontage shown on the plan. A no vote is to deny the endorsement. So I move to endorse the A and R for 5565 Farm Road. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. If anyone has any discussion, I would like it somewhat limited. Do we have any discussion?
I would like to ask a couple of questions. I have some issues with that. I agree with you that I don't believe, at least the building lines are drawn in a way that corresponds with what I interpret to be the intent of the zoning bylaw. I don't know whether, if you don't want to discuss that now or get anything, I mean, we just have to vote based on what we believe or what do you want the person bringing the A and R to defend that at this point? I guess I also have a question, a technical question about the law to maybe Gino can address this. The A and R says that the approval, okay. I'm a little confused about the the page in the application where it says the undersigned approval is not required because the plan does not constitute a subdivision. And they're saying, because each lot therefore has frontage on Farm Road. So does that basically tell me that we're only supposed to be considering the frontage and no other requirements, including the building line in evaluating this?
That is, that is correct. Are there any other questions? So the motion is on the floor. A positive vote would be.
Chris, yes. May, I had my hand up and I was waiting to be called on. I apologize for interrupting. Am I allowed to speak?
Um, you know, my only, my only question, Bob, is a lot of residents, I think, want to speak. And I'm, and I want to try to keep this as.
Yes, but this is my prop, this is my prop, this is my property and my application, Chris.
And I'm asking. I realize it. I realize this, but this is not a hearing.
I understand it's not a hearing. I'm just asking whether the chair will allow me to speak. That's a simple question.
Please, go ahead, Bob.
Okay. So I, I am really, really concerned here, Chris, about due process. You have just asked this board to make a decision on my application and have effectively told them, you don't want them to deliberate. You don't want them to speak about it in public. And I think this is a horrendous violation of my due process. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Again, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have any other questions from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor of endorsing the A and R for 5565 Farm Road signify by saying aye. Again, a positive vote is means that you're for it and you agree with the frontage requirements as shown on the plan. I'm going to start with Addie May. Will? Frank? Rob? Okay. A no vote means that we are not endorsing this A and R. Addie May?
Nay.
Will? Rob? Frank? And I am also a no. Thank you very much. Let me see. Gino? Town meeting warrant articles, Maple Street. What do you have?
The article for engineering services for the design of the Maple-Sanger-Washington intersection has been submitted. It's going to appear as a capital budget item. And it should be on the on the warrant. So so that's okay.
Okay, great. The other warrant article that I would still like to discuss is lot width. And so if if the board, we kind of have been going back and forth. If the board would like, I'd like to have it put on for discussion on the meeting on the 18th. I just want to get a sense of, does the board, is the board happy with the current definition of lot width? Or is this a discussion that we would like to to continue? Addie May, what are your thoughts?
I still think we need to continue only because of some, some kind of unintended consequences with some of the last discussion.
Okay, okay. And again, you know, at one point, I was row row about this. And then I felt like we couldn't even come to an agreement and we had enough stuff going on. So I thought like, maybe we just pull it off and not have a warrant article. So I just want to get a sense. So Addie May says yes. Will, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think I agree.
Okay. And and Rob, you still want to have this a discussion regarding lot width and changing our bylaws?
Certainly, yes.
Okay. And Frank?
I also agree that we should have more discussion on the topic.
Okay. So if it's okay with everyone, I'm going to ask Gino to put it on the agenda for the 18th. And and let's sit and see if we can have some fun with it. I would like to have, I like the idea of the circle. Several people I spoke to in town that have been on planning board in the past also like the idea of a circle. I'm not saying it has to go that way. Let's just sit and have a fun discussion and a robust discussion and see where it brings us. I think if we can clarify things, I think that's fine. I think the current writing was, goes back to 96. And and they didn't want, they wanted to give guidance, but they didn't want to stifle people being creative. Unfortunately, I think we have to do a little bit of stifling, but I don't want to stifle it too much. So hopefully that'll guide the discussion a little bit. Does anyone have any other thoughts or questions?
Chris, just a point is that warrant articles are due Monday, January 10.
Can you put, can you put a placeholder in?
Yeah, that was, that was my, going to be my suggestion, yes.
Yeah, put a placeholder in and we've got plenty of time to withdraw it. But I think whatever we come up with, we have to agree that the wording is as best as, because it's still going to have to go to advisory. It's still going to have to go to the select board and it, and then it's, and then we're going to have to have hearings. So we're going to get plenty of input. So whatever we decide is going to be like sausage. It's going to change as we go along. But I think as a board, we should at least agree on where we sort of want to be with it. So Gino, you want to talk about the compliance guidelines for multifamily districts? Thank you, Charlie Baker. Gino, would you start that discussion? Has anyone received the paperwork?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. I, I thought that this would be an opportunity to kind of start the discussion. Obviously, it's a very significant change in state law and potentially really, really significant change in town bylaws. So it'll require, you know, a lot more discussion beyond tonight. But just to kind of introduce the topic. The the housing choice legislation, which passed last year, had a requirement that what they considered an MBTA community should have at least one zoning district that allows multifamily dwellings by right. And it should be of reasonable size. And it also, well, the, the guidelines require, I should back up for a minute. So this passed last year, I think it was last January. Some draft guidance came out around April or May. But the real guidance, and it's still in draft form, just came out like a week or two ago. And it has a much more specific guidelines on what towns need. And it has a much more specific guidelines on what towns need to do. And so they define a. Multifamily district of reasonable size as one of a minimum of fifty acres with a density of fifteen units per acre. However, that density. It says fifteen units per acre or as limited by the Wetlands Protection Act and Title Five. So Title Five limits density to one bedroom per ten thousand square feet. So that's a significant difference from, from fifteen units per acre. However, there are some things, oh, oh, and these districts are intended to be within a half mile of a. Transit station, either a commuter rail station or, or a bus, you know, bus station. Et cetera, however, if there is no such facility in the town. Or not one within half mile of the town border. Then it could be in what's, what's stated as. An area that's compliant with the state sustainability, sustainable development guidelines, which means basically a village or town center. So. It raises a number of issues, oh, 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 no, another important point. The, it has the concept of unit capacity. And that's defined, it varies by type of community within the MBTA district. Since Sherburne does not have a commuter rail station. It's, it's classified as an adjacent community. And adjacent communities, the unit capacity of the multifamily district. Can be ten percent of the total housing stock in the, in the community. And that's the lowest level, the, the ones that do have a station have a higher percentage. So based on our twenty twenty housing unit, twenty twenty census housing unit count. Fifteen hundred and sixty-two, we would need a hundred and fifty-six multifamily units, a zoning district that could accommodate a hundred and fifty-six units. That, that can be existing units. They would count as well, so the total has to be a hundred and fifty-six, they don't have to be built, it has to be zoned for, for it. And it has to essentially have the infrastructure to accommodate it. They define multifamily housing as a building with three or more residential dwelling units. Or two or more buildings on the same lot with, with more than one residential unit in each building. Let's see, what else? There's also temporary compliance. The full compliance is achieved by developing what they call an action plan. By July first of twenty twenty-three. And that plan has to call for adoption of a district by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. However, temporary compliance can be achieved by one. Briefing a meeting of the select board on these guidelines by May second of this year. Number one, number two. Filling out of an online form that's called the MBTA Community Information Form, which I looked at, it seems pretty. You know, not eventful, just some, some details of information that shouldn't, shouldn't be difficult to do. And finally, providing updated GIS parcel maps to Mass GIS. I spoke with the assessors office and that's already in progress, so we're already, you know, on the way to doing that, so. So essentially, the only thing, we, we can easily achieve the temporary compliance. So I should mention that the penalty for not being in compliance is that the town loses eligibility for. Housing choice grants. And we have already received one housing choice grant of a hundred thousand dollars that helped fund the North Main, the new North Main Street sidewalk. Mass Works Infrastructure Grants, which we don't, don't have, we have not had one. And a third. Third one, which is the Local Capital Projects Fund, which to my knowledge, we have not had that type of grant. So. Uh, what else? I, I raise, for the planning board members, I, I raised a couple of questions in there. It's not clear, since the definition of multifamily housing does not restrict, does not. Prohibit. Age restricted units, however, the district must not prohibit age restricted units. But the definition they provide does not have that, that restriction in it, so it's unclear to me. Whether, since existing units can count, whether existing units that are age restricted would count toward the hundred and fifty-six. Also, they, they.
Like Woodhaven?
Yeah, Woodhaven, Abbey Road, potentially Meadowbrook Commons in the future. They say that a district of reasonable size is a relative. Rather than an absolute determinations and they, they specifically state that a multifamily district that's reasonable in one city or town. They not be reasonable in another city or town. So I'm not sure how far they go with that, but does that mean if, if a town does not have infrastructure? That there's some leeway on meeting the minimum unit capacity? That's specified. And. Essentially, that's, those are the high points. So I just thought it would be good to start a discussion, start a. You know, presenting this information that's coming along and. We can have further discussions as we go along, the next step would be to request. To get on the agenda of the select board and make a presentation on similar to what we just did tonight, but. Maybe a little more focused. And get them, get them up to speed.
May I make a few comments, Gino?
Sure.
Would it be possible? For you to just to. By the next meeting, just to sort of type out a timeline of things that deliverables that we need to have done. Like you said, the select board meeting, but there's also a time, there's also, we have a, a period of time to comment, to make comments, don't we?
Correct, thank you for, for reminding me of that, we can comment on these guidelines, the comment period ends March thirty-first.
Okay, so I, I always like to give the board homework, so I think by, at, at the next meeting. If, if there's any thoughts, concerns or criticisms that any board member can come up with, that might be a good time and maybe as a board, we can. Put together a few comments, mostly because we're going to be, we're going to have a lot of limitations based on our infrastructure, number one. And then, and then after we look at the timeline, then once we learn a little bit more about what's going to actually be required of us. After that, I would like to, you know, present to the select board, but not until we have our hands around some of these more obvious questions. To the board, the other thing that Gino and I had talked about is. Whether or not we could sort of overlay this with the end of Coolidge Street. And, but my other thought is, I personally think something like this, if you want a vibrant downtown, maybe this would be something that would be better. In the downtown area. And, and I'm not saying that's going to happen, but these are discussions I'd like the board to have. What are your thoughts about doing something like that in the downtown area, Gino, versus Coolidge Street?
Uh, I think that, that could be, could be possible, could be desirable. Something we really definitely should look at.
I mean, if, if, if the rental units, if they ever go in at Coolidge Street would count toward our hundred and fifty-six. Well, then it would make sense to do it there if it. Because our requirements would probably be pretty close to being met. If it doesn't, I would actually like to see this in the downtown, if we're always talking about a vibrant downtown. If you want people walking around and, and it's sixteen and twenty-seven and maybe at some point. There could be, you know, the small regional bus and who knows what will happen, what could happen in the future. I mean, this is really stuff that is down the road, not so much next year and this year. So these are discussions, these are things I'd like the board to think about and so if we could have a timeline. And if there's any thoughts, questions and comments that we could have, particularly how it would affect Sherburne. You know, we can continue this discussion at the next meeting and let's see where it goes, is that fair, Gino?
Absolutely, and by the way, Frank has his hand up.
Okay, Frank, please.
If I could just add an underscore to your point, if we, if we did look at the Coolidge Street, if that were an option. That, that location is in the neighborhood of about one and a half miles from the West Navy Train Station and about one and a half miles from the Framingham Train Station. There's also, there's also that small metro bus. That is also in and about one point two miles from that location. So if a bus stop were placed in and around that Coolidge Street. That could take residents to. Those rail, commuter rails stops, that could be really interesting for, for, for that population and. They really need this in the, in the way that the state is looking for, as a thought.
Well, you're right, I mean, you're right, and, and I think what you're saying was actually the intent of this. That, that's what they want to do, they want to make it easier for people to use public transportation. But again, you know, these, these are all things that as a board we have to discuss, because at some point we're going to have to pitch. A different zoning district, does anyone else have any other? Thoughts, concerns or criticisms?
Rob has his hand up as well.
Rob, please.
Yeah, just a question about this Whitelands Protection Title Five. I guess. I'm assuming that, that refers to like. Septic systems for individual residences, but don't, when, when there's like a, a dense development, doesn't. You know, they put in some kind of treatment system, does those limits still apply or you can build with much higher density then, right?
You could. Yep. But. It could all, it could be smaller units and, and they could be. You know, based on Title Five as well, I would imagine. I don't know enough about it, this is, this is the first time I've seen this as well. So again, these are all, you know, if we have questions, this is a time to, to comment again on, on issues that are specific to Sherburne. Because I think general things, I think the state's going to have a pretty good handle on. But we have to really look at requirements based on what we can actually handle from an infrastructure point of view. Addie May, any thoughts?
Yeah, just, um, I just wanted, I know that we're just in preliminary first discussions, but I'm just looking at. The, when Gino, when you were talking about the. Ten percent of Sherburne's. Housing count and needing to. We need to have within one district, a hundred and fifty-six multifamily units or. Does the entire town of Sherburne count then as a district to meet the ten percent multifamily?
The, the, there can be sub-districts and. At, at least one district needs to be a minimum of twenty-five acres. And of the fifty and no district can, no sub-district can be less than five acres, so yeah, it can be split.
Okay, because I mean, I guess you, you are also, you're, you're, you brought it up that whether forty B's count because there's nothing in here that says. Multifamily has to be affordable, so we've got the fields at Sherburne. Our duplexes, we've got. Whitney Farms are mostly duplexes. I mean, I guess at some point. We've got. You know, it's not the same percentage battle. That we have with the affordable numbers to get. Multifamily dwellings throughout town, right, I mean, you've got Kendall. Sherburne Meadows up on Kendall Avenue, I don't know how many. I guess I'm just wondering like, where, where are we realistically, potentially already in compliance if we're just looking at how many multifamily?
But it's not, it's not. It's not a hundred and fifty-six in, in total in town, like I think the fields. We would have a hard time justifying that as being in a, you know.
Right.
But. Yeah, but others, yeah, I think, you know, we might be able to. Have more than one district.
But, but I, but I think the, I think the intent of this. Is to encourage more. Multifamily units.
Yeah, I think there's an idea that multifamily would lead to naturally more affordable housing, I think that was the intent. Of course, we've seen lots of luxury townhouses for years and that's been the, the general dilemma. With this type of bylaw.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's another big ask for the town, right, this is, this could be potentially a headache, but. But all it looks like is we just have to sort of choose where we want it and, and sort of be. Be willing to accept more of this sort of housing, the, the question is, you know, where would you? Where would you want to put it? And we don't have to provide, I don't think, any more than that, do we, Gino?
No, and we don't have to, it doesn't have to actually be built, we just need to. Create the district where it could be built by right.
Marion's got her hand up.
Marion? Marion?
She, she's. Yeah, I'm sorry. It sounds as if this, this law, this state mandate is a work in progress and they're asking for input. So I, it seems the first, the first job, if you like, would be to figure out. At what parts of it are open to input and what parts you can. Give them feedback that would be relevant to a town like Sherburne, that would make it more easy for Sherburne to comply. I mean, before you worry about how you're going to comply.
Yeah, I would imagine we can do both initially. I think we can ask a little bit and politely tell a little bit. Gino? What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I suspect there are going to be many other towns similar to us. That don't have the infrastructure and are going to be commenting on that, so there might be some changes in that regard, but I, I don't know.
Okay.
You certainly can provide that input.
Okay, so. If you want to continue this discussion at the next meeting, again, I'd like to see a timeline of, of things that as a town we need to do. Let's think about how we want to present it to the select board, I think we have to do a little bit more homework before we do that. I also don't want to waste too much time because their, their schedule, their calendar gets kind of booked up and, and that looks like an easy deliverable. But we also have to really figure out what's going to be required of us and, but, but let's start with any comments that the board might have. And, and we'll talk about it the next meeting and we'll have Gino put together a letter, does that sound fair to everyone?
Yeah.
You know, is there a, a link or the connection of some kind to those open comments so that we can?
No, that's what, I can send you the complete, I sent the summary kind of, I can send the. Did I send you the complete guidelines, draft guidelines, I'll send that anyway.
Yep.
And I'll send a link to the, the state website that has more information as well.
Okay, and, and just with a little reminder. If anyone has, it's not homework, if, if you look at it and you don't have any thoughts or questions, don't feel like you have to come up with something. But if, but if there's anything that we would like to add to this, to the discussion. I think it would be, I think it would be welcomed. So let's put this on the agenda for next meeting. So let's put this on the agenda for next meeting and um, and do a little bit of homework between now and then. Um, maybe this Thursday, Gino, um, when we meet, if we're still going to meet this Thursday, maybe we'll sit down and we'll concentrate just on this, if that's fair, a good use of your time. So if any, if if any other members want to come, as long as it's only one of us, um, please feel free to join us on Thursday.
Oh, one other point on this, there is a uh webinar scheduled to review this in more uh detail, which I plan to attend. And if anyone else is interested, uh, you know, let me know and and uh I can send the link for that.
Would you, would you, would you send it to everyone, Gino?
Sure. Yeah.
And then people, if if they have the time, that's great. If not, I'll watch it as well. And then and then we can at least report to the board and um, okay. So we'll talk about this on Thursday, we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting. And um, and let's get going on it. Let's at least fulfill our obligations to the state, so. All right, updates on any ongoing development projects, Gino?
Um, not really, no. Uh, I I my understanding, I know that Coolidge Crossing was on the agenda for Conservation Commission last Thursday, and I believe they were expected to close that hearing. But um, uh, I don't know that for a fact, so that's moving along. Um, but I I'm not aware of anything else, any other updates?
How about the um?
Is, we have Courtney Eck, can she give us any status update on that?
Is she here?
I mean, she's showing up, she may be, have her video off and maybe busy, so.
I can give an update, it's Michael Lesser.
Oh, hey, Michael.
Hi there. Uh, there was a uh, they asked for a continuance. We were supposed to close at each meeting, but there were some issues with COVID and then, and now some of the uncertainties about the uh Meadowbrook uh was was noted in an email to us saying that they wanted to even continue closing it all out, uh, even even though we're supposed to do that on this Thursday's meeting, but it's being continued another two weeks. Um, so we're quite close to closing it out, but they've asked for continuances. Uh, so we're just waiting to see at this point, over close.
All right, good, good, thank you. Um, anything else, Gino?
Nope, that's all I have.
Okay, and um, uh, Vin Gately, his project. So you're sure there's a door going in there?
Yes, I saw the plans.
Okay, okay. Um, you might, I don't know if you want to tell the board about about that, not that it really matters, but um, I I sort of drive around, I make sure people are doing what we asked them to do.
Yeah, well, in under construction, the the building on the end, on the right side of the road, um, because of the way they had the uh, the, the, I don't even know what to call it, it's not plywood, it's that green board. Um, they had it over the opening for the doors, which made it look like a window.
Okay.
But the uh, you know, the plans clearly show that there's, there's a door there as well as a little porch, covered porch area.
Okay, so for, would you give a little background? I don't know if the new members know what you're talking about.
Yeah, so when the project was uh
Which, which, which project, Gino?
Sorry, sorry. Fifty-nine North Main Street, twelve, twelve single-family homes on a condominium lot um, with a common septic system in the, in the oval in between the the houses. And um, so the, a design feature that was requested and complied with was that the 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 end units on each side would have a facade facing the street that looked, looks like the main facade uh with a entryway and 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 such, and designed features to to make that the the uh, the main facade facing the street. And so um, that's, that's what this is about. It looked like, because of the way the construction was going, that there may not have been a door on the front of that one unit. And this, that's the last unit, by the way, and and it's an affordable. So when that's, when an occupancy permit is granted to that unit, we can uh add it to our subsidized housing inventory. That's gives us one more unit.
But you know, the first unit that went in, it has the door on Main Street, it looks great. Those people, they put pumpkins out there, they decorated it, I mean, it looks wonderful. It really does. Any other updates on development projects, Gino?
No.
Okay, so next meeting, we're going to talk about Eleven Farm Road, we're going to talk about lot width, and we're going to talk about um, the compliance guidelines for the multifamily districts. Is there anything else that um, any of the board members would like to bring up at next, for the next meeting?
Um, no, but I know that I think, Bob, did you, I I know that I was a few minutes late, did we get the, we'll get a placeholder for um, I think it was discussed at the last meeting, the placeholder for the engineering question for the Maple Washington intersection, sorry. Okay, I just, you don't need to, that was already agreed on, right? So we don't need to do anything further other than getting that notice to the Select Board Office, right?
Already, yeah.
Well, I was going to ask, what's, what's actually going to be in this? I mean, what are we requesting specifically?
It'll be requesting, kind of like we did with Pine Hill Road. It's requesting the um funding, which we're, I can't remember if we actually, I think we're working still to get the quote for what the engineering would be, and the engineering then would give us the, we'd go to the town meeting with that information, and that would then help um the next stage of discussion.
You know, the specifics of what we are, what are we engineering?
Um, I I believe it's an, the suggestion from the Complete Streets was an engineering of a a roundabout.
Okay, cuz because I haven't seen that. I looked through a whole bunch of material you sent me and there's all, there's like six different recommendations going all the way back to um, nineteen ninety-five, including a roundabout, including traffic signalization, including just uh reworking the intersection slightly, and um, I just, how did, how have we come to, I I, I I don't know how we come to the decision here that it's definitely going to be a roundabout. Is that, did the planning board decide that at some point?
It was on the Complete Streets prioritization from two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
Said it um, that a roundabout would be the best, um, would be the likely best. I guess the question is, is at the time, I think, the, well, the question becomes, what does the engineering potentially look like as far as whether people will, I think the the discussion back, aside from cost, I think the reason it hadn't been pursued previously was potentially cost, um, and also scale of roundabouts, I think, and um, regulations, DOT regulations have allowed for some smaller, some different designs that doesn't, don't require as large of a roundabout that allow for um aprons that can be, you know, trucks can mount the center, so that's where, you know, the engineering would be done and would show how big something would need to be, and that would, you know, so first question, first step is getting engineering, and nothing would be done with that engineering without the second step, which would be asking for if it, you know, if it does count, agree that that's the right plan. But engineering needs to be done in order to know what the, I guess, construction cost would be, and then everybody would look at that engineering and say, yes, it's a good idea, or no, it's not a good idea.
Okay, so this would be like a sort of a twenty-five percent engineering or something. It's not an absolute detailed engineering plan that you would do as part of preparing a bid package.
I think it would need to be, I don't think it makes, I mean, the engineering to, I mean, we don't have any underground infrastructure, so I, as far, as far as cost and engineering, I mean, what we have in the, the, you know, the basic sketch from past projects we have already, but there's were issues of whether they were maybe too big. And I don't know that it, I mean, I I don't know what everyone else on Planning Board feels, but I don't think it makes sense to do another sketch that doesn't really tell us what we'd really be looking at for next steps. It's, it's, cuz I can't imagine cost, once you start, if you're, if you really need, I mean, we're doing the survey work to just to get our survey area done, but.
Can I comment?
Yes.
Uh, Chris, would you mind if I comment?
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, um, you know, I was, I was there when we went through the Complete Streets thing, and I will recall that uh, many of their, some of their recommendations made sense to us and some of them didn't. So it wasn't like a mandate of things that needed to be done. Uh, the safety of that intersection is a big uh, is a big issue. But I had the same question as Rob, actually, same, the same two comments of Rob, as Rob. Uh, at one is, you know, at what point does the town decide whether to go through with a really professional detailed engineering of of a roundabout? But I think what you're asking for now is something in between a sketch and a full engineering job. Because I think the town doesn't seem to seem, doesn't need to see the details of the, of a full engineering job of something that's going to be built in order to make the decision as to whether they, they want to see that at that intersection, because it has been controversial, you know, it does uh impinge on the properties of the of the town of campus.
So I I understand, I guess the question is, there's a couple of things going on right now. If, if we say, okay, we're going to town meeting asking for a a partial engineering, which may not, you know, it's just relatively small amount, I'm guessing. I mean, given the the full complete engineering for the Pine Hill Access Road was under eighty thousand, and that had stormwater management, lights, electric, a lot of other things going on for a complete full, um, you know, complete full for this will be less than eighty. So if you say a twenty-five percent or fifty percent engineering, are we going to find that we down the road are doing duplicative work? I don't know. Um, the other issue is, right now, we've got, there are mass DOT funds in the pipeline potentially to be asked for with the um, federal infrastructure bill. And it's my understanding, there's towns already queuing up their projects. So if we say we are asking, we're going to town meeting for a partial engineering, and then getting a partial engineering, and then we're saying, okay, next year, town meeting, we go for a full engineering, are we now saying it's three years before we go to town meeting and ask if there's support for the project? I guess I'm looking at the timeline.
It was, it it, yeah, it was, it was my, it was my understanding, um, mostly because of the next round of Complete Streets funding, and we wanted to utilize that to the maximum, that we were looking at a more complete engineering study. That was, that was my understanding of the discussions that I had with Sean.
Uh, I just, oh, you know, thinking about town meeting and how this is uh managed to get the town meeting vote that you would need for an engineering study, you kind of need to have the town on board, you need to have the town do what a roundabout. And that, it's kind of a conundrum, you know, how far do you take it in terms of visualizing what it would look like in order to be able to get the town on board?
Well, 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 that, well, that's true, Marion, but that's why, so initially, it had been brought up that we could use other funds for the engineering study. And and the only reason that I pressed to make it a warrant article was because if the town said they didn't want a roundabout there, I didn't want to say that, oh, by the way, we spent forty thousand dollars on an engineering study. So so this is sort of an opportunity, if the town doesn't want it, for them to say no before we've spent a penny. So that was sort of, sort of my thought, um, because I didn't want other money spent on something so specific if it couldn't pass town meeting for the engineering.
Yeah, that does make sense, I agree, but I still, uh, where is that? Where is that debate going to take place? You don't want it to take place at town meeting.
Oh, no, it'll, we'll, we'll have multiple hearings. Well, again, it'll go to, it'll go to advisory, and so we're going to get a pretty good sense um, of how advisory and um, the board, the Select Board. And I mean, we're going to get a pretty good sense of how people feel, and quite honestly, a lot of people have said to me that Planning Board should do something about that intersection. So, so this is really, again, most things that I do are are in a response to lots of people asking. So, so, so that's how we came up with that, and and this, um, the DPW director is is very excited about the prospects of cleaning up that intersection as well.
Eric Johnson has his hand up, Chris.
Oh, see, see, I can't see, so Gino's supposed to tell me when someone has their hand up.
I was about to, Marion, be.
See, it's easy for me to blame you, Gino. Eric, please.
Okay, how do I do this? Thank you. Um, I'm sorry I missed the very beginning of this conversation. I've, I've, um, I I sat down just recently. Is this request, is this a capital fund request to um, do the design to twenty-five percent? I think I heard someone, I think it was Rob talked about taking this to a twenty-five percent design.
Um, he did mention that. Um, what we had talked about is a design study for a roundabout, the engineering for the Maple Street intersection, and 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 I had suggested early on that we should bring it to town meeting and not use other funds because it's an opportunity to pitch it and see, see what the residents want. Because if they don't want it, I don't want to, I don't want us to spend the penny if if the town's not going to be for it.
What's the value about to get this for the study? What's the value of the request, the amount of the request about, you know?
Um, Addie May?
I was trying to, I thought, I think we're um, I don't have that number in front of me, but I, like we were saying, it's going to definitely be less than the Pine Hill Road because there's no lighting, there's no stormwater, really, I mean, there's beyond, there's
Okay. I I think this, in my opinion, I think this, this may be worth it, as long as it's a study, and it's probably limited, Pine Hill's eighty thousand dollars, and that's a full-fledged design. Um, because I think one of the things that really should be done before you go before a design request before town meeting is determine if it's going to get tip funding. This may be eligible for, you know, transportation improvement projects under the MPO and Mass DOT funding. And I think that's something, someone spoke about that earlier, and I think that question should be answered first, talking to the MPO rep, and not to put Marion in the spot, but I think Marion might be the actual town's designate, designate need to deal with the MPO. And I think if you get that, then that'll drive the project, that'll completely drive, if you can get on the MPO list. I mean, the advantage is, it'll actually, you know, the state funding will help it go through, it'll be good to get state funding, but it might take about five years to the actual construction and best case scenario. Unless the MPO gets infused with the, with the ARPA funds, if that makes any sense. If this is under fifty, under fifty thousand dollars, a study may be worth it because I don't know if a study, maybe someone who knows this better will know better than me. Has a study been done to determine, like, do traffic counts in a different direction to determine if an actual roundabout is warranted or not? Does anyone know?
I believe, I believe so. I mean, we have several years of studies, um, and I believe they led to saying that a roundabout was the best scenario. I believe, though, the design of roundabouts, when the big study was done in, I think it was around, Rob, what was those, like, two thousand nine, or even earlier?
Well, I made some notes on it. There was a bunch of studies around nineteen ninety-five, and traffic safety recommended a traffic signal there. Uh, VHB did a study and they recommended a roundabout, and Mass Highway had Uh, VHB did a study and they recommended a roundabout and Mass Highway had some quite negative comments about. The applicability of a roundabout to that intersection.
Right, but there's also been a change of um. I mean, in, I know, I only recently I drove through Swansea, New Hampshire, which is. Sandwiched, it's a major commuter route between um Massachusetts and Keene, New Hampshire. And they put in a roundabout in twenty fifteen and actually the New Hampshire DOT website has a lot of information about roundabouts. And the ability to make smaller roundabouts, which means less. Land um use, but smaller roundabout designs that would still allow trucks to get around. Um, Eric, just a question, is it the same as kind of complete streets funds and everything else that tip funding would not apply to any engineering, right? So Mike, is that correct?
To the best of my knowledge, yes. I thought there was a small, there were certain small town exemptions. Where small towns maybe get design funding, but in my day job, I never deal with that. I only deal with big towns and big projects, you know what I mean? So traditionally, most uh MPO or tip funds, you're correct, is construction only. And does not fund uh designs. The community has to take it right through the um, what's called the uh, a hundred percent design for bidding.
So I guess just based on kind of what I've seen the last couple of years, um, and. With the Pine Hill Road and other scenarios where we've kind of done half work and then thought, oh, maybe we could, we could go for. Some state funds or other or or federal funds, but we're not. So-called shovel ready, we don't have the engineering in place and we've lost out, so that's the argument to. And and also then having a full engineered helps us really know if something really going to work. Rather than being in a situation where we have partial engineered and someone says, okay, yeah, that looks good, but will it really work?
If you want to get something, I don't want to find a shovel ready, but something that's ready to get on the tip. And be analyzed and scored and put on tip, you got to get to twenty-five percent design. So go beyond a study, it'd be turn, you'd be already determined if you have the counts, I understand there have been some studies done and counts there. That a traffic um roundabout is worthy or or appropriate, I should say, in this situation. Then you take it to twenty-five percent and twenty-five percent then mast DOT kind of goes through a prescribed process of twenty-five percent hearing. You take it to, I think the next one is like eight, seventy-five or eighty-five percent, and you have that hearing and so on and so forth. And a twenty-five percent design is actually pretty designed. It's almost, it's most of what's on the drawings and no specs. I don't know why they call it twenty-five percent, frankly, it's uh, it's more than that. But that's probably what you'd want to fund and if you want to get it, like I said, on the tip and get the state addressing, get people ready for the funding, because then. Then it looks like you're serious and it looks like you're um, ready to uh, to do the actual project. Now, as you indicated, I'm not sure what the cost that would be. It'd just be like, you know, it wouldn't be as much as other projects because there is, you know, no underground utilities here. I don't think you're increasing impervious area that much, if I wouldn't have any stormwater requirements.
So I just, I'm sorry, I was just pulling up, I understand. The uh. Engineering is um, that Green International has come up with a preliminary estimate of um thirty-eight, thirty-three thousand eight hundred and forty. And that's engineering plus pre-bid construction, which I guess. I'm still not clear. I haven't fully analyzed what that means, that maybe Eric, that means something to you.
Yeah, it sounds like a full design. It sounds like we talked about pre-bid. It sounds like it's taking it all the way. Which a small project like this may be appropriate, I got to be honest. You know, I don't know how much more detail you can put into a roundabout, you know what I mean? It's not. Um, one of the advantages of these smaller projects, you know, like half million dollars or less, is sometimes the MPO just finds money. So they're dealing with like, you know, five to fifty million dollar projects. Something comes underbid or it's within the margin of error and all of a sudden you can do a roundabout insurance.
Yeah, so um, looks like they broke it down. The engineering and design estimate is nineteen thousand six hundred and thirty. And then the construction phase kind of initial. Is uh, unless that's for this, so I make sure it's not sidewalk. It looks like they've got that. I don't know how they could have that set, but I guess it's just the oversight is that fourteen thousand, so total. Direct expense, I guess, total labor, total, I guess, I mean. Yeah, that's like everything getting it into pre-construction and. They would have labeled this, I'm sorry, just because we were talking, there's been talk of the sidewalk and then there's talk of the. Two different conversations and.
If if you want, I can look at it offline. It might be putting the sidewalk for the complete streets, it might be. I think that's.
Well, with with all respect, that's what I was going to suggest, if if Rob Addie May. And uh, and Eric could could talk in the next couple of weeks and and figure out the best way to present this. Is that fair?
That sounds, that sounds great, yeah, because um, those numbers, I think I'm conflating, I think I'm mixing projects, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, so I mean, I mean, so that way you guys can just chat offline. And then and obviously, whatever you, whatever you do, obviously, run it by Sean. And then just give us an update of our next meeting and Gina will put it on the agenda. Is that fair? Okay. Um, is there anything else that anyone would like to talk about this evening? If there's no other business, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
I know I started the meeting with a very weird conversation, everyone, and I appreciate your patience. All those in favor, and we don't have to do a roll call, and and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and and in the meantime, Thursday, if anyone wants to come over um, town hall in the afternoon. And start working on some of this, that's great. If in the meantime you have any questions and you want to um, send them to Gino. Or thoughts, criticisms that you want us to look at, that would be great.
Wait, Chris.
Yes, Gino.
Because it's remote, it does have to be a roll, roll call.
Okay. Addie May?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Rob? Frank?
Aye.
And Chris is and I have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.